Okay, Jack.
Okay. Do I have to hit this? Got it? Got it. Yeah, first, in terms of the procedures of the meeting, the public is always welcome to attend these meetings. And I will at various points in the discussions turn to the public to see whether there are any comments. But until I do that, the public will be muted. And so we ask for your cooperation. If you do wish to say something during the public comment period, raise your hand or can we chat on this?
Yep.
Okay, or send a message in and I'll be sure to get to you. But the idea behind here is to try and run an orderly meeting. So that's number one. Number two, I just for the benefit of the board, wanted to just pose that we, you know, our major, our major responsibility in the, in the planning board is of course to approve the projects and plans and maps and the like. But section 21 9 also gives the board the authority to independently investigate, study various subjects that might have an impact on the development of the village. And I think that there are some issues that are coming up in the aggregate that are going to become more and more evident as time goes on, tourism being one of them, for which there's been as yet, I assume, has been as yet no real comprehensive study, either of its potential or its management. And it's something that I would like the board to take up in the time that it has when it is not working on specific projects. So I just throw that out there to ask you to begin thinking about that and how you might go about doing it. And I'm not limiting it to tourism. It's just something that I think is becoming more and more of a, having greater and greater impact on the, on the life in the village. So let's move on to the minutes we were discussing and we will discuss now formally that our method for approving the minutes will be that, and they were excellent, by the way, Karen. Thank you very much. And thank you for getting them out to us so quickly. The process that we're going to be using going forward is that Karen will send out draft minutes to all the members within a short, reasonable period of time after a meeting. And the members, if you will, we ask that you read the minutes and if you have any corrections or comments to, to send those back to Karen with the track changes function working. And they will, as soon as everyone sends in their comments or given a reasonable period of time, those changes will be compared to the record and incorporated into the minutes. And the, a final draft of the minutes will be sent out to the members just before the following meeting. So in this case, Karen had sent us the meeting, the minutes of January, whatever it was, our first meeting in January, that date. And there were two, both Yaslin and Matt had some corrections to the minutes that have been sent in. Those will be incorporated into the minute and a new draft will be sent to you all sometime the week before our first meeting in February. And the goal here is to be able to adopt the minutes in fairly short order, having had that amount of time to read them and correct them. Okay, so any questions about how that's going to work? Please send your comments in directly to Karen. Don't send them to, you know, reply all. Send them individually and then Karen will send, will incorporate those changes and send them back to everyone, the same draft back to everyone. Okay, we still have pending the correction of the minutes from those three prior meetings and I'm going to move that. Should I have put those on the agenda again by name?
No, they don't have to be by name. Minutes are just a standard function of a board.
Okay, no, no, I meant the specific meeting.
No, no.
Okay, all right. Well, if we do, if we do have time, we'll move those to the end of the meeting.
We actually, we actually only have one set. It's only the November 11th. The other ones were approved on November 11th. 9/23 and 10/28 were approved on November 11th. So as long as we all sign those and send those back.
Okay.
So we just have, it's a, it's a fairly short set of minutes. It's two pages and I don't think there's really going to be any changes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll do the, do you want, when do you, when do you think we should do those, Matt, upfront or at the back?
Whatever you like. I mean, there's, they're, they'll be quick. It shouldn't take, I'm Lara and Sue and I have been doing this a long time. We typically kind of fly through them. It shouldn't take more than like five minutes.
Okay, then let's move it to the end. Okay, and move on to the business portion of the meeting. Now, do me a favor, on the agenda where it says members, comments, which members are we talking about there? Are those elected officials? Are they members of the?
The planning board. Yeah, I mean, the, like you said, the planning board, I mean, we're all independent autonomous members of a legal body. Right? It's not, it's not a committee. So there may be things that members want to speak about. And so you basically, I would typically just open up the meeting and say, does the members have any reports? People could have concerns, they could be larger issue things, like you said about looking at tourism, they could be. So that's all it is.
Okay, all right. Well, are there any member reports then? Does anybody have something on their mind at the moment? No, no. Okay, and the next one, I'm not actually looking at the agenda because I have. What's the next item on the agenda when I?
Correspondence.
Correspondence.
Correspondence. Is there any correspondence to report? No. Okay, then moving on to, I'm trying to get used to our, our minute format, to all business, which are the items before us. Let's begin with the re-referral of building one in Butterfield and the change of use that involves. I asked Yaslin to look into, as you recall at the last meeting, certain questions came up regarding, you know, the matters of the type of senior housing as well as parking issues, that's other issues. And they're quite specific, the questions that came up. And I asked Yaslin if she would take this on and track down the answers to some of those issues. And she has had conversations with John first, who's the village attorney about these. And I'd like, if she would, to just give us a report on what her efforts uncovered and thank her for the time she.
Yep, no problem at all. So I think this is, it's going to be pretty straightforward. I had a really good conversation with John first and really it was all about complying with the B4A requirements and anything that he understood based on the outstanding questions. And there are really only three things, I think, that are, you know, relevant to kind of talking through today that came up before. And one additional thing, so on the parking requirement side, we've got both retail and we also have the residential parking rights, so two different zoning requirements. On the retail side, that's been previously approved. We have that information on the, on the parking table. I think that's been fine, that's fine. It's approved. The only thing I think that we brought up last time was the, okay, so how do we treat this residential parking? And there is an update for the residential parking on that same table on the right side. But one of the things that John was saying is because the 900 square feet is the change of use is being changed from retail to residential, 24 parking spots and the zoning requirements for that is different, right? From retail to residential, 150 square foot requirement per total versus 350 square feet requirement per total. So that is how we get to the 24 parking spots minus the 20% waiver. However, since we're only needing to account for six parking spots, because there's going to be six units, unless there's some, there were some concerns being raised, you know, previously with the condo units that maybe instead of six, we need 12, or maybe we need visitor overflow. What he's recommending is that we plan for the six with the, which is well within the number of parking spots required and well within the space that is available. But perhaps we do things like designate and mark the residential parking and make sure that the residential parking is in an area that's safe and easily accessible. I remember last time Matthew brought up the concern about some spots we're back in. So this is a good opportunity to revisit, where do we put the six spots? If there were concerns previously with how we did parking for the condo units, maybe we plan for, you know, a maximum of 12 for residence, for the residents. And then the rest can be used for like the retail overflow. But I think the net net to that conversation is we just need that to make sure that that's properly marked in the site plan. Whatever direction we end up going with that. So again, my perspective is that that's pretty straightforward. Obviously, there's a lot of, you know, space available to account for that. It's just a matter of, of making sure, number one, we agree to the number of parking spots, that's a minimum of six. If we're following the one parking spot per residential units. And then just make sure that in the site plan, that's properly marked so that we can actually see where that designation is going to be. Matt, does that make sense?
To me, it does. I don't know which map, but yes, I mean, it makes great sense. It's a good overview.
Okay, fantastic. So what that then means, so I'm going with the Matt versus Matthew. So Matthew, Francisco, and then Matt is you, right?
Okay.
All right, cool. So what that means, the net net of that means that you just need to make an update. We recommend that you make, just make an update to site plan that you already have that shows X number, minimum of six is going to be residential parking. We will, you know, put signage, you know, all of that good stuff. And, you know, I would take into consideration what Matthew said, you know, last time about, you know, where the locations of those are. Do we have to have people back into the spots? Is that safe doing that from the street? What's, what's the best use of that parking area? But I think from the, you know, unless, you know, other members of the planning board have any other comments, I think, you know, the recommendation is really about safety, right? And making sure that those minimum of six, you know, you can definitely do more to account for the, you know, the change of use to residential for, to accommodate for that 900 square feet area. Are there any other comments from other planning board members regarding?
Matthew?
Yes, so the, the question is, you know, there are several things at play here. It sounds like what was discussed was really just the B4A zoning language. We haven't touched on the, the difference between condominium and rental, right?
No, we did. And what John said is that there's no, no difference. And the way that it should be treated is, you know, that it's, that the language in the B4A doesn't specify either one. So the, he feels that the decision is that they're the same, like it's about senior housing and whether it's residential or condominium. It's all treated the same. That's what he said.
Yeah, I mean, respectfully, you know, obviously Johnson attorney, he's looked at this. I disagree. I think what you, one piece, a major piece that's missing is the EAF, right? Part of New York State, you know, land use approval is to go through an EAF. The EAF, when it approves the 55, and we probably ought to just take a quick peek at that. Let me just share this really quick. Karen, if you want to let me just share that, yeah, yeah. So we can look at the 55. Because then the question is, then do you have to do another EAF to understand the environmental impacts, right? It's required under New York State code. These are binding legal documents. These aren't just, uh, so it is not unusual actually that, you know, any attorney, good ones, like would just kind of look at the code, look at the language of the code. But that's never the whole story. There is, you know, there's underlying documentation to the code. So, but one of the, one of the biggest things here is, let me just see. So the way the, the way the planning board did the land use and approvals was that they were all condominiums, right? That there are, and obviously there is the impact of condominium and the impact of residential. When you look at planning and you look at things like, you know, there's, obviously there's some sentiment that, you know, renters aren't investing in the community, condominium folks are. So there's, but those things are all just kind of more kind of esoteric discussions about. But what you, what you look at here is all units, so of the 55 units of senior rate housing, yes, it does say senior housing, right? It doesn't talk about the type of ownership and how title would be held. It just says senior housing, but it's very clear that all the units will be market rate for sale condominiums, right? So it happens often when, you know, when we're, you know, when we're making a land use decision that we're, the code is kind of regurgitated back to us and said, well, no, it says this. Sue and Lara will remember when we had an owner that wanted to subdivide a bunch of residential units and use the parking waivers. The code didn't clearly say they were for business, you know, for the, for business use, for change of use. But when I did some research and you looked into the underlying introduction from the mayor of the local law and then the boards, when they reviewed it, it was very clear that it was just to process change of use for commercial applications. So it's important when we make these decisions that we aren't setting an unintended precedent, right? That the legislative body that is the one that's allowed to make these laws, no, no diff. And here, it's a conditional zoning change, right? It's completely discretionary. It's, you know, so the, it was at the discretion that the, that the legislative body could make the change. So when the planning board then took that concept plan, the concept plan is approved in whole, very similar to like a PUD, right? A planned unit development. In that planned unit development, the 55 units were all considered to be condominium fee simple, could only be rented until such time as they were sold. So I understand why John, you know, didn't kind of, you know, get all the way through it. But obviously that's, I'm not faulting John. A lot of times when you, you know, when you use a lawyer, you have to kind of guide them to, you know, to where they need to be and kind of say, what, but what about this? But what about this? And then you're like, and then, you know, luckily, you know, hopefully at the end of the day, you kind of get to the right answer. So we do need to look at that as well. It would seem to me that even if you could make the legal argument that rental is allowed, that I'm sure that's, I think that's a, you know, that's an argument that could prevail, right? You still have to then say, oh, then we still have to do an environmental assessment of adding residential. For example, or rentals, right? Matt had found him, you know, had found an email where we talked about rental. We also talked about hotel. We talked about a ton of different uses. Some of them would require legislative action, right? So they were just kind of spitballing about things they're wanting to do. So if that is the direction that they want to go, you know, hotel, for example, I told them, that's a, that's a legislative action. You'd have to get the use added to the site. It would be a zoning change. So if this is something that they want to do, I think there's certainly a compelling argument to say that rental is allowed. The question is, is it approved and has it been properly reviewed? Seeker in the state of New York is the hard look at the application to look at the impacts, right? So if you're going to add a different use, you have to look at that impact, right?
Right.
Or we haven't done our jobs.
Right. Thank you for that. Really good information. So are you recommending that in addition to the updated site plan that we also do the EA, the EAF?
And I think, yeah, I think we should probably talk to John to just say, and this, and, and I really don't want to fault John. This is, you know, I mean, I work with attorneys all day long. It's like, you know, you know, so you're basically kind of guiding them through the process and, you know, no different than, you know, directing a plumber that on, for, on this faucet, you want the cold on the right. You want the, you know, and, you know, and so, and it's like, all right, well, we can do that too. So, um, yeah, I think we should talk to John to just say, wait a minute, we also have to look at how the approvals were done. If you take a, you know, if you, if you take the blinders off and not just look at the code, you have to look at how this site plan was approved. The planning board approved site plans, right? Part of that review and this one, it was kind of like a PUD light was done this way. So I would think it would be good to just kind of loop John and say, what, you know, so if you believe that it, that, that it's a reasonable argument to say that senior rentals, right, senior housing that is rental can be added, then what do we need to do for the review? Because the approvals of the 55 were for condominium only.
Okay. Hopefully he'll be able to join today. He said he's going to try to join before meetings over. So we'll be able to ask him that question.
Okay, great. And I assume we've established escrow, Jack, or Karen, anybody?
That we have done, excuse me.
Establish the escrow account, so.
No, no, no.
Well, we want to do that. So, uh, the residents aren't paying. Because obviously John's billing, John gets paid regardless, so.
Okay, we shall do. At this, at this point, he, you know, he has provided us.
We know, but we know where to find that, so.
Quick summary of the past.
Okay, okay.
The history of this. So yes, then moving on, what were the other, the discussions? Is that the total of your discussion with John?
No, there were, there were two more.
Okay.
Two more things. The other one was the 5% community space.
Right.
Yeah. So the question is, you know, 5% of the 9,000 is 450 square feet, right? So how are we going to account for that, for the new six residential, you know, apartments? And his question was, you know, we should definitely go back and ask the clerk to find out if because of the, the total 55 was originally planned, do we still have to do that for this additional nine? Or because it was thought about in the original 55, is it enough that it's okay that it's in the other buildings? That was the kind of sort of like the outstanding question. Or do we just, do we have to also do a 5% for this new space? And if so, then he was just saying, you know, because it's only 450 square feet, you try to do it within the existing footprint. If it's not done within the existing footprint, you have to go back to the village board to get it approved if you increase the, you know, the footprint. Right? So that was sort of what was outstanding. His, his opinion was the easier thing to do is to figure out how within the 900 square foot, you can create 50, you know, 450 square feet of community space. You know, he was kind of spitballing, saying, well, if you have a lobby, maybe just make the lobby bigger, put seating and say that that's going to be the community space. So that, Matt, was another thing that's that sort of came up within the code to consider. So that would be a recommendation or an ask to see as a part of your floor plan, site plan, how you're planning to account for that 450 square feet for community space.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at that. I'd have to look again at the code. It also was a combination of indoor and outdoor space. So yes, we could look at some space inside and, you know, there are definitely some outdoor areas that could be considered for space also.
Okay. And then the last one is just a question and a confirmation. The code also says that the floor plan of each of the unit should be less, two bedrooms or less. And so, you know,
Right.
It doesn't exactly say in the floor plan that you included in the application what that's going to be. So that would be another update when you're going back to just make that clear. And there were specific square foot requirements or minimums in there for different size apartments.
Right.
And if you want the sections, I can give you the sections. It was basically 15 AD section 10 that had those, those numbers in.
Right, yeah. Then I recall, these would, these would meet those minimums.
Okay, so it sounds like the only other further action for us on this, us meaning the board, is to, for what Matthew was talking about, to just go back to John to figure out with this change of use, how, what does that mean for EA, EAF and Seeker? To see, you know, what more we need to do. Or considering the code is saying, all units must be market rate for sale condominiums and that's not what we're doing. So I'm happy to take the action to go back to talk to John if he doesn't, you know, show up on this call today.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, maybe we could ask John, you know, we have, we do have the EAF and it is something that you would refer to, but it's also not, it's not the code.
I thought it was. So what we have on the screen there, isn't that what was approved?
No, that's a, that's kind of like a supporting research document that goes hand in hand with the board's review. There at the town board or the village board while their planning board, while they're reviewing the approval of the documents, ultimately you have the code.
So, so our Matthew, where does this description come from?
This is, this is, this is in the EAF, when the planning board undertakes an application that, that is not a type two, it's not an unlisted or, or, or a type two. It then has to take the hard look. That's what's required under New York State code. This is in fact, the planning board's official look at the impacts of this project and why they designated it as, as, as a negative deck, right? That it didn't need to go on to the EIS, which is a full environmental information statement, right? So these are, this is in fact binding. This is, these are how the site plan was approved, right? So when the planning board, the planning board gets a consultant, they get the applicant together and they go through this approval of this site plan. It's a very long process, right? As Matt well knows, they ask a bunch of questions. This is part three of it. And so the applicant answers those questions in the parts, right? So this is part three of Seeker. And so when you're doing the hard look, then the planning board decides, do these mitigating factors of, you know, address the issues that they have, or do they go to a positive deck? And then, and then keep going forward. So they, they negged it, but they did that based upon this information. This is not something that can be poo poo. This is, this is the approval, right?
It's not a matter of it being.
No, no, I'm sorry. I guess, I guess what, what concerns me is that it's not the code, therefore it's that it, that it is just some document. That is, that is, that's a complete mischaracterization of what this is.
We will look into this certainly. I don't know myself whether had it said 49 units of condo and five of rentals, whether that would have driven this project into positive exploration of negative impact. But you're right, we do have to take into consideration the thought process that led, that underlay.
Right, right.
You know, the, the decisions to approve. On the other hand, the code is important and it is the code finally that the applicant, any applicant is obliged to follow and that we are obliged to defend. So I think Yaslin, this has been, one more thing, we did determine that the, there was, that both rental and condominium were taxed at the same rate. So that was also, I think, a question that came up last week. So Matt, thank you. Matt Moran, now thank you very much for the updated materials. I think we need to have a group call with our attorney who, who has another meeting tonight. So if he comes on, it's going to be late in the meeting at all. And I think maybe this deserves a little more time, but I think we seem to be approaching a conclusion as far as I'm concerned. Okay, so. Okay, so, um.
Now, um, would, would you like, would you like, I don't know if the board has input at this moment, or if, if you want me to go ahead and discuss it amongst, uh, our team, try to designate the parking spaces or?
I, I, I think anything that you can do that, you know, answers outstanding questions is helpful. And I think particularly the five percent, you know, public use.
Yeah.
Is, is, is an important issue. So I would, I would continue working, uh, in answer to these, which seem to me not to be hugely complicated, those issues. Okay, and we would appreciate that.
And additionally, uh, I think based on what Yaslin said, the floor plan needs to show uh, that it's a two bedroom. Currently it doesn't. Is that correct, Yaslin?
Yeah, that's correct. Just need to identify what, what are you guys thinking? Is it studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms?
Yeah.
It can't be more than two bedrooms.
Um, do we have any public comment on this conversation so far? Would anyone like to say anything? No?
There's no public.
Okay, well then.
I, I have a, a, a brief comment if I may.
Sure, go ahead, Ann, Allison.
Um, just, I, in terms of public input on this, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, I live at Butterfield in a condo at Butterfield. I am on the board of the Butterfield condo entity. And, uh, on behalf of the residents of Butterfield, uh, we, uh, uh, I want to express our, our favorable view of having residential, six residential units as opposed to nine thousand square feet of more retail office space. It will, uh, bring, uh, more stable traffic and less traffic to, uh, to the community, to our little, our little corner of, of the village and, uh, we, uh, we are in favor of, of the, uh, of this modification.
Is that, may I ask, is that, that was a, a vote taken by majority or what?
No, I'm just expressing, I'm expressing, uh, um, I, I have discussed it with, with, uh, members of the community, but there's no, there's been no owner vote. Um, I'm expressing though, as, as a, as an engaged member of the, uh, Butterfield community, that, that there's a favorable view.
That, that will be duly noted, Allison. Pending an owner vote, um, then, um, you are simply representing yourself here in this conversation, I think.
Yeah.
That's, as you must understand.
I understand.
Okay, but it, but it's duly noted and it's duly noted that you have discussed this with both the members, is, okay?
Great.
All right, thank you. Um, if there are no other comments, then, um, thank you, Matt.
There's, there's one more comment, it looks like.
Yes, Lara.
Uh, no, uh, I believe it's Maria Hardman. Yeah. You're muted, um.
I'm not seeing.
Uh, on the bottom, slide to the bottom and then there's an arrow.
Ah, there you are, okay.
There I am, there I am. So, um, I also live in Butterfield and, um, I'm in favor of this change of use because of a couple of reasons. Um, I'm also on the board, um, with Allison. And, uh, we have not heard any objections whatsoever. Uh, the people that we have spoken of and Matthew, we have not taken, uh, a forty-nine homeowner vote, but everyone that we did speak to was in favor also of residential use, um, in place of the nine thousand square foot of retail. And, um, for that, for the reasons that this area here, Paulding, Chestnut, Butterfield, uh, is a, a mainly residential community with, um, um, the commercial being on the west side of ninety, closer to three oh one and Main Street, where it probably should be kept. The, um, also I'm like Allison, concerned with having all of that retail here, the traffic in and out all day long that we see in front of the post office that would not be part of our community because it would remain out on nine D as opposed to, um, in the interior areas, areas of this residential community. Um, and, you know, I think that a lot of Cold Spring, um, natives, residents are concerned about the tourist traffic. So the more we bring retail up this way, the, the more we're going to have, bring the tourists from Main Street out to our area. And, uh, I have a bit of an opposition to that because like a lot of Cold Springers, we do not go into town on Saturdays and Sundays because, you know, of the traffic. We, you know, all the merchants appreciate and, and we appreciate that anytime you speak with someone and mention Cold Spring, they're like, I love Cold Spring. But they're talking about Main Street. They're not talking about Paulding, Chestnut, um, Butterfield. And I'd like to keep it that way. Um, and, um, I think I've covered all my points. Um, just that I'd like this to remain our kind of residential community and less of a retail in and out traffic all over the place kind of area.
All right, thank you, um, Ms. Hartman. I don't think we've ever met, but thank you for your comment.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. And they too will be duly noted in minutes.
So, Jack, I have a question.
Yes.
And, yeah. And, and I guess this is for Matthew as well. The purpose of, you know, what we're doing, um, is, is less about trying to decide whether or not it should, the change of you should be changed, but how we can make, follow the laws and the rules to make the change of use be a reality, right? So which I'm hoping can provide some kind of comfort to the folks at, at Butterfield for you, Maria and Allison. Like, we, we all want the same thing. And this is about, this discussion is about how we can make that happen within the laws and the, you know, regulations. Is that right, uh, Jack and Matthew?
Well, it certainly expresses my view that we're here to help applicants, um, within the, the boundaries and the fences that have been set up, uh, through the process for, based on the public good. So we have a balancing act to perform here, but it is not an either or us and them balancing act. It is just that, it is, uh, it is making sure that the public good is served based on what the past commitments are. But that also, uh, the applicant and the, the property owner are given the as quick as possible and a fair, um, fair response. So I, I, it, it's never an easy job. And, um, and there's been enough history on this particular project that has made it a little more difficult. Um, but I'm hopeful that with a proposal like this, which I think is relatively minor, not totally innocuous, but relatively minor that we can achieve both of those goals going forward. But Matt's correct in that we have to look at the process that led to the original decision, which is substance in addition to the, the style.
Okay, yeah. So. Could I add something, uh, Jack? So, you know, we, you know, we would like to start construction in the spring, one way or the other. You know, and, and, you know, see, we have to do our design documents and take several months to take care of. So, you know, we're looking for a decision one way or the other as soon as we can, so we can get, you know, going into the ground. And then, you know, regarding the, um, you know, the parking, you know, just the thought is, it, it's one per unit. And, and as I have mentioned in the past, you know, there, there is a lot of residents of the buildings that don't use two cars. Sometimes there's one resident, uh, there's a lot of elderly. And the thought of, uh, designating twelve spaces outside and now, you know, not having possibly additional parking available. You know, you, you, you go, go ahead and you assign away, you know, twelve spaces, you know, when only six are required by code. Uh, uh, and now, you know, the other six are tied up. I mean, we can, we can look at what seems to be what would make sense, you know, for, if there was twelve, but, you know, our team will have to take a look at it and, you know, we'll have some thoughts for you at the, at the next meeting. But we, we weren't looking for a prolonged process, as I had said early on.
Right.
We wanna, we wanna get moving and, you know, if it, if it's, if it's, you know, it's not a threat. It really isn't. It just, if it's gonna go out weeks and weeks and, you know, months with, with the process, we're gonna go, you know, with the previous.
Okay, I, again, Matt, I think you've expressed that, you expressed that the first meeting and I think, I think we heard it. And so I, and we're trying to respond, um, you know, as we can in terms of the specific issue of the six versus twelve. Um, if you're required to do six, um, I, then you're required to do six. And anything above that is a, um, is an estimate. Um, and I'm not even sure that it's our business to tell. I think that we are, must be concerned with the fact that with a medical there are sufficient parking places and with the post office, there are sufficient parking places based on their own requirements. Beyond that, it seems to me that it's a matter of, of, uh, private parking and private property. But, um, I, I, I do think that it, and, and by the way, you know, the whole idea of encouraging extra car ownership is something that we should be concerned with as well as the village. But I think you need to do what is required under the law and if you can do more in response to concerns, uh, then, then you should do the more. Um, but I, I would like us to focus in on the specifics of how this was approved and, um, and to be sure that what we're doing is consistent with the spirit of the original approval and that, I'm sure that's what you wish as well. And thank you for letting us know you have a, you have a time schedule.
Yes.
Okay, it's not unusual. So, all right. Um, well, thank you all. And, uh, you, Matt, thank you for sending in the, uh, updated materials. We will, uh, try to arrange a meeting with our attorney and then we'll, we'll, we'll see you at the next meeting, okay?
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thanks, Yasmin, very, very much for putting in the time on this and, uh.
You're welcome.
We'll do the, you know, we'll continue on it, uh, till we can come to some agreement. Um, the next item on the agenda is the reformatting of the map, which seems to me to be more of a concern to me than others, uh, at least the others in the, uh, who were present at the last meeting. So I'd be interested, Lara and Sue, um, whether I'm totally alone in this. But the, uh, we, the, 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 the board of trustees referred to us, the proposed map by the historic district review board that reformat, that makes very minor modifications, but not, not, uh, material ones to the, um, historic district, poultry historic district. And, uh, within the process of this formatting, um, a discussion apparently took place many years ago. And I've been trying to find, um, the proper staff person to actually discuss this with. It predates Sean's involvement at the H D R B. And I really can't find anyone who has anything but the vaguest recollections that someone in the state historic preservation office seemed to be comfortable with the idea of removing the boundaries of the National Register Historic District from the map of our local historic district. As you remind everyone, uh, the historic district was put in place in the late nineteen seventies. Later than that, there was an area largely along Main Street, um, that was designated a, um, uh, eligible for the National Register Historic Districts and therefore a state historic district. Um, automatically. And whereas that kind of a designation, national register listing, state listing is in most instances an honorarium that carries with it no extra regulations or restrictions. There are cases when in fact it does and they can be considerable. And that's in the instance of a federal action and that can be lending money that can actually be, you know, bulldozer. It can be a whole variety of permit by federal agency. And, uh, if that federal act or state act has the potential to impact the historic registered district, there is a quite burdensome process called the section one oh six process that has to be gone through. Um, it is. So for instance, were some building on Main Street to receive, um, infrastructure money from the federal government to do, let's say, a, what, Texas? Um, that unless, unless that money has been specifically, um, you know, uh, exempted from that process, that would require, um, a, an analysis of the impact of that project on the federal historic district and the properties within it. And so it seemed to me in looking at the graph map, not including that, I saw no public purpose in not including the boundaries of that historic district. It is referred to in the text. Um, and even so, even more so, I think it ought to be included in the map. The maps are legal documents and it's sort of preservation one oh one that there are three maps that are tended to properly noticed historic districts and that is the boundaries of the district, the zoning map, and then an overlay. And those three maps, um, are generally considered what should be in place. As a way both of, um, informing the public and as well as, uh, uh, protecting the property. So, um, I, I asked Sean if he could, you know, find someone that I could speak with up in, in the S H P O office. And he is trying to do that, but we have to, uh, submit our comments uh, to the board of trustees at their next meeting. There is a time clock running on this uh, that started in the December meeting of the board of trustees and, um, and so my concern and what I would propose is that we not take a position on whether they should approve or not approve this map, but we should raise this issue um, as something that they might wish to explore and perhaps modify the map. In order to bring it up to what I consider to be minimum preservation standards. So, um, I wish I could. relate to you the history of the conversations that took place, but apparently the players are no longer around. So um what's your feelings about it? If any. Matt?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I guess, but I can't wrap my brain or I get you. This is something that you have a lot of experience in. I'm not in the historic preservation side. I I guess I need to hear where where, why the planning board opines on this. The planning board certainly wants to know about land use and so, and and I'm looking to be convinced or 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 educated, right? You know, as to, you know, we look at land use and say, okay, you can do this. You can't do that, right? You can, no different than, you know, we have, you know, so where where does this? Where does this spill over into a planning board doing kind of site plan review? And or is it part of this larger thing like you're talking about tourism or?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, the planning board is charged with approving maps, uh, including this kind of map and.
Oh, really? Is that even even an HDRB?
Yeah, and it was referred to us and the way that it was referred.
That's that's compelling. All right.
Yeah, I mean, we we have, this was formally referred to us by the by the Board of Trustees. There was apparently no consultation with the planning board before it went to the Board of Trustees.
No, there was none.
And I think that would have been helpful, but that's not apparently the way it was done. So a finished product was sent to the Board of Trustees after a lot of work, mind you, uh, which I'm not minimizing at all, um, at their December meeting. And then uh that started a sixty-three day clock. Uh, the Board of Trustees then referred it to us and we, they're asking for our comments on it.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I got lost is that we 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 actually are, because we're the planning board, we get asked for our comments on pretty much everything, right? Which is fine, because that's what the planning board does. But no, I I think your your point is compelling and that's the that's news to me is that we we are actually being asked to approve a map and that you have an issue with the map. That I think is, that's reasonable. Yeah, I mean, I, you know.
So if if you all are comfortable, I in if I could have a re- a a resolution from the floor saying that that you all are authorizing me to bring this concern to the trustees at the next meeting. As I say, I won't, I don't think our comments have to include that, you know, an approved, not approved uh resolution. Uh, that's a decision that they should make. But I do think we need to bring to their attention that I think there's a serious um flaw in the map as proposed.
I'm so moved.
Thanks a second.
Hold on.
Discussion?
Yeah, can I have a question is um uh looking at the map. Uh, I have no objection to to anything, but I think um marking clearly uh the national uh site, it would be good uh for for the awareness of of people. Because uh, you know, as um our discussions before, I think even our board members uh at that moment may not have realized that the uh Foundry uh was uh a a national site now. Okay, I I think if we 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 don't have to mark every single thing, but that is a big one. I think if we mark it, at least it it, you know, adds to the awareness and the and the importance of Cold Spring itself. That's that's uh that's my opinion. But I have no objection to to the to the map itself because we're so new to the village. We have no idea of other things.
Okay, thank you. Lara?
Uh, yeah, and I'm sorry I wasn't there at last time, but in reviewing the minutes, it seemed that the response to that question about the different layers was that they were working on a table. I unless I misunderstood that. Did I did I misread that?
Sure. First, um, there's a resolution on the floor from that. And can I just have a second so we can discuss the resolution?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yes, okay, thanks. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead with your, well, there is, there is, and there is a going to be a table that is going to say in terms that yes, this district exists. But that's more, that's more of a compelling reason than any for me or as compelling as any than to put the boundaries up there.
Yeah.
You know? It's not as
I I just
If anyone's trying to hide a National Registered District in the center of our village, you can't. So it just seems to me that people, it it's this area of 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 letting the public know.
Yeah, or like clarity of information.
Exactly, exactly.
I get that. Yeah.
Okay, so um if there are, is there any more dis- if there is no more discussion on this, I would like to take it to a vote if we could. And that is all in favor, and I'm voting yes.
I.
Yeah, I.
Thank you. So that makes it unanimous. Uh, thank you very much.
That actually, Jack, just for identification, that's helpful for the village board when you go to them. Like, is it, was it, you know, majority unanimous?
Okay.
Obviously unanimous is more compelling.
Okay.
One would think.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yes, Yaslin seconded.
Okay.
Okay, and uh the third is just to give you an update on Forty Main Street. Uh, as I think I said at the last meeting, um, correspondence has gone back and forth, positive correspondence with the owner of Forty Main regarding the need for an extension of the uh fashioning, the agreement on the off-street parking. And um the village received a positive response to that, saying yes, they they uh they agreed to the extension and yes, to the basic sort of terms of it. And since then, there has been absolute silence from the owner of the building. So um and um that has involved, I believe, you know, direct contact or calls from the village attorney to try and move this along. So I have unfortunately nothing much more to say other than the village is going to try again, is trying again to contact them and to get their response. And as soon as they do and as soon as we have something to discuss, we will discuss it. Okay.
And am I correct that they're they're just not responding? They're just?
Apparently.
Oh, wow. I know that last night on the agenda, they had author and in the meeting, they had authorized the mayor to negotiate with the owner, but that would be an owner that's speaking.
Well, that's right. And and she did. They they apparently sent a draft to the owner along with um a formal representation that they weren't objecting to the extension. And that was signed. Uh, but since then, it's been radio silence. So um
I hope they're still committed.
Yeah, well, we'll see. It could just be, you know, other business, other busy, so, you know, you know.
Or COVID.
COVID, yeah, everything is COVID now.
Yeah, our COVID procedure for for timely. Okay, um, and so.
Well, that's not a joke. Somebody could get COVID and not say anything and and if they don't
And 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 now's and now's the time, right?
I know, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. We shouldn't be joking about it. It's just, uh, it does show up in all sorts of places for things not getting done. Anyway.
Right, exactly.
So um next on the agenda is, well, shall we um take up the the uh remaining minutes that need to be
Yep.
approved, please?
Yeah, let me just, I'll just share these really quick and we'll just go through them very quick.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, the only ones that are left are these November eleventh. I actually didn't notice. As you can see right here, we already approved the other two sets of minutes.
Yeah.
So those those I'll sign and I'll send uh I'll send to the to the secretary tonight. So Sue and Lara, this is us because we're obviously the uh majority.
Yes.
Um, luckily, it's a nice small set of minutes.
What happened to Stephanie? What she she doesn't want to be on the board anymore?
Uh, the mayor didn't reach out to her and didn't reappoint her.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, no, she would have, yes. So uh, let's go through these really quick. Do you want me to read them like I normally do?
Yes, please.
Jay first recommended the board declared the application as a type two uh unlisted action under SECR. Given there's no expansion of the footprint and thus no environmental assessment, um, interview is required. And Francisco commented the amendments to SECR give the board the ability to take such action. It used to be that we were, um, every darn thing inside the Historic District had to be a had to be in action. It was a nightmare. Um, they changed that, so that really makes uh SECR a lot easier to deal with now. Uh, he advised the board that it could grant conditional approval of the applicants, change any parking waivers or alternatively hold off on approval pending the discussion and or agreement for the Board of Trustees on how to handle the parking issue with the caveat to the applicant that the type two unlisted action under SECR could change if the Board of Trustees required substantial changes to the parking requirements. It's pretty straightforward. T Rassic Arctic Lap confirmed that the short form EAS was already submitted. That is true. Motion was made by uh Member Myers to close about the hearing. Stephanie seconded the motion and the motion passed. Motion to designate it as a type two, pretty straightforward. And Francis commented legislative history of the payment of parking waivers provided meaningful document process for change of use of village properties. This should probably say a change of use of village commercial, commercial use. Because that was what the distinction was, right? That uh first came up with Two Depot Square when they wanted to subdivide a lot of apartments and buy waivers um to expand the residential use on Main Street. Uh, the proposed parking table included seven retail, six with the one space grandfathered in, because main application support is able. The board is unable to recommend the thirty-seven parking waivers due to the number and the four-hour parking restriction on Main Street. I'm very comfortable with that. That's an important piece of the history here, okay? Laura Eldon agreed that the payment of parking waivers is inapplicable to the Forty Main Street project and the applicant must find different solutions. You good there? Okay. Jay Gary stated he visited Fair Street Municipal areas while the MTA with the mayor. Hawkins commented the applicant could make a contractual agreement with the village. It would be consistent with the code. John first commented that the use of Bursary Miss Parkers prose would be a favorable solution, but the terms were set forth in contractual agreement. All true. Francisco commented personally apply to use the board considering special use. Should be periodically reviewed, you know, and that's important too is that, you know, when this agreement comes over, we then have to review it and make sure that we believe it meets the parking requirement. It it would make sense really for the village board to do that prior to entering into an agreement if the planning board doesn't accept it as a reasonable solution to the parking problem.
I believe that. That's the plan.
Okay, very good. Uh, Stephanie Hawkins, whether the approval would be for the twenty-nine instead of the formula for payment uh that's obviously, that's exactly what she was talking about. It'd be more leeway with the approval of thirty-seven. However, the board must be able to sports action either way, demonstrating logic and code compliance. Jay first commented the ultimate approval would be with the village board either way. Uh, it that's, and that's a John statement. It it is true. Yes, you can enter into agreement and you can say the agreement has good terms if the planning board doesn't accept it as a as a viable solution, right? We wouldn't, for example, we wouldn't want this to spill over into other applications on Main Street. That would be very problematic for us, right? That you need something and then there's some sort of precedent, right? So all the whereas statements are going to be very important when this, you know, when this document comes over. So this is a little kind of oversimplifying that the 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 village board has the ultimate approval. Sure, right? But it's a but it's on a contract with, you know, with the, yeah. John first stated the letter to the village board sending forth the parking comments, a draft letter we circulated on the board members and concerns. That's all fine. Motion to adjourn. Okay, uh, I think that's fine. Uh, of the three of us, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? The I'm sorry, the November eleventh, two thousand twenty-one minutes as amended? Moved and then seconded?
Seconded.
There, that's you. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, very good. Great. Thanks.
Karen, if you show Yaslin and Jack abstaining, please. Okay, um, is there any new business? If not, uh, then uh could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, the second, please, second from Sue. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for a very informative meeting. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Hi.
All right. Take care. Bye.
Thank you, Karen.
The last one.
Bye, Sue.
Bye. I'm trying to close off.
I know. I know.
Okay.